It is now 6:30 and we are going to get started. All right, it is my pleasure to call to order the Board of Commissioners of Abington Township, regular business meeting of January 14th, 2021, our first of 2021. And let us have the roll call, please.
Commissioners Thompson?
Here.
Brodsky?
Here.
Bowe?
Here.
Carswell?
Here.
Rothman?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Bowman? De Placido?
Here.
Weinberg?
Here.
Veighi?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Hecker?
Here.
Spiegelman?
Here. Commissioner Bowman is in fact present. And now, if we could please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, a few announcements to make. The first is that an executive session of the Board of Commissioners was held on December 29th, 2020, to discuss a personnel matter. And next, it is my pleasure to read our resolution, or really proclamation regarding the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. After that, I will be turning things over to Commissioner Carswell for a brief update on the MLK event for Monday and how all that's going. And then I'll have one additional announcement after that. So this is a resolution, or really proclamation, number 21-001. Whereas Martin Luther King Jr. was a man committed to peaceful coexistence, where all men would be free from racism, bigotry, and discrimination. And whereas many people look to the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. as a source of inspiration for promoting harmony, cooperation, and understanding. And whereas the third Monday in January has been declared a national holiday, and on that day, January 18th, 2021, Abington Township will conduct a memorial service at noon, which will be attended virtually by civic religious school and government leaders. And whereas Abington Township is here within honoring Salem Baptist Church as the 2021 recipient of the Martin Luther King Memorial Award. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Abington Township does hereby proclaim January 18th, 2021, as the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and encourages all interested citizens to participate in the township memorial service. Resolved this 14th day of January, 2021. And now Commissioner Carswell, would you like to give us an update on the event committee, the event team that you've been chairing?
Yes, thank you. So I'm going to start by just saying I am so appreciative of the work that this team has put into this. We have representatives from many different experiences and skillsets, although none of us have put on a virtual event of this nature before. But I'm very excited about what folks will be able to see on Monday. Again, that's at noon. Everyone can go to abingtonpa.gov/MLK. So the homepage also has it under the news section, if that's faster for folks. And partake in the event. Everything is virtual at noon, but there are opportunities to do service work throughout the township. In fact, people can pick up kits or participate in the various components of the service projects starting now. If you go to that same website I said, abingtonpa.gov/MLK, you can see out all of the options that are available. We'll have a very large food drive. People will be out scraping spotted lanternfly eggs off of trees, putting together special care kits for families who are facing cancer treatments, and a lot of other options as well. And we've also cross-promoted things that Abington Friends School and some other organizations are hosting as well. So I'm excited for it to be a day on. While we can't be shoulder to shoulder together, we can certainly do a lot of good. And I think it's a program that is very much geared to all ages in our township. And we'll have some young celebrities after this. As one young child said, we're all going to be YouTube stars after this. So I'm excited for the families, no matter where they're located, to be able to come together and see this. So that's it for me, and thank you so much. It's not it for me, I have to say this again. This committee has worked tirelessly. We're not done. There's still more to finalize, to pull this all off. And there's a lot of appreciation that I feel. But I think the group as a whole has had a lot of fun coming together to work on this. Thank you.
Many thanks, Commissioner Carswell. Thank you so much for your work chairing, and thanks to everyone on the committee and everybody who's participating in, arranging in, sponsoring, co-hosting, et cetera, all of the various service projects. We're really looking forward to it. Now I have one final announcement. And while I am reading this, I do want to give proper credit and many, many thanks to Commissioner Lori Schreiber for arranging and organizing this and also providing me with this information. This is a COVID-19 memorial event. As part of the events for next week, the Presidential Inauguration Committee is hosting a memorial to remember and honor the lives lost to COVID-19. Next Tuesday, January 19th, 2021, at 5:30 PM, a Washington DC ceremony will feature lighting around the Lincoln Memorial Reflecting Pool. It will be the first ever lighting around the reflecting pool to memorialize American lives lost. The inauguration committee has also encouraged cities and towns around the country to join Washington DC in illuminating government buildings in a national moment of unity and remembrance. Abington Township will be participating by providing special amber lights by the police memorial at the front of the township building on Tuesday evening to honor those that have lost their lives to COVID-19. And again, thank you very much, Commissioner Schreiber, for all of your work on that, it's truly appreciated. All right, that concludes the announcements from me. There are no presentations, so let us go to the attendees list, and we will take public comment on agenda items. So anyone who wants to make a public comment on agenda items, please raise your hand. Okay, all right, we have one hand raised. Could you please let in Walter Draven?
Mr. Draven, you'll just have to unmute your microphone on your device.
You can unmute and go ahead speaking.
Okay, John, this is Laura Lehman. And I have asked you since April of last year to actually create a way that people who are having problems can contact you. There are chats at the bottom of the screen that could be instituted. You can have a screen number where somebody can call, and Ashley or someone else can be appointed to monitor it. In the last meeting, you did not recognize my hand, and apparently you didn't recognize my hand in this meeting either. So we have a problem. And the problem is that you do not accommodate residents at any point to help them into this process. And many people have been blocked out of meetings because you wouldn't do that. So yeah, I'm pretty angry. I had some comments from the last one, and you know I had comments from this one, but you didn't even recognize my hand. If there is a problem, somebody needs to be there to troubleshoot. So this, you know, and I will tell you again that, you know, this is not... I can't tell you how frustrating this is. There is nothing in this township that somebody is turning their attention to help the residents. So I'm going to start my comments now. It is 7:35, 40?
You have a minute and a half left.
Okay. No, you know what, John, that's not okay. I just spent this time telling you that your system was broken and you need to fix it. That's not my public comments. So I'm going to tell you now, I want to start with the Willow Grove Mall. Completely false presentation by the developer. And you know that it is not a public meeting for the residents to actually present something that's false, not give them any documents, and then later to have them submit something that's completely different. There is no way that should have been put forward. All of you knew that this was different. Nate, Mike Narco which even helped write it and stayed quiet, didn't say that is not what's in those documents. You have things in those documents, like removing the non-combustible feature. You have things in those documents that not only 85 feet high, but you have things in those documents that everybody would be horribly concerned with, including things that it has to be 35 feet high near residential. Well, there's no way that that building is anywhere near residential. So clearly, we are zoning for lots of other things. None of that discussion was held. The commissioners didn't do it, no one did it. And I want to strongly tell you that the documents that have not been turned over yet on the salary issue, you actually had a... You told a bald-faced lie.
Your time has expired. Thank you very much.
Mr. Man Freddy told the bald-faced lie.
Your time has expired and will not be further extended. Thank you. All right, moving on. No other additional hands raised, so we shall move on to the consent agenda, for which I turn to Vice President and Ward One Commissioner Tom Hecker.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. I will make a motion to approve the items on this evening's consent agenda, items A through F, as listed in this evening's meeting materials, and I so move.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from commissioners?
I do.
Chris Myers?
Yes. Item B, I don't know if we need to actually take that off, but I think that for the public's sake, an explanation should be made of exactly what that is. I'm not opposing it, I'm not... I just think that it should be made, you know, clear to anybody that is interested.
All right, no problem. Manager Man Freddy, would you like to take this one, or would you like me to field it? It's up to you. Rich, you're muted.
I think candidly, if this is the lien matter, I'm going to suggest that Solicitor Clark address it.
Oh, you know what, I was looking at the wrong thing. This is the... It really isn't for me to punt this one. Go ahead, Solicitor Clark. You're still... Mike, you're muted.
I apologize. I was looking at the lease agreement. So this is a... Well, the property owner, who there is a huddling on this property, this is transferring from... And let me just get my notes on this. So this is a transfer. And while it is not necessary that we subordinate the lien, the owner is asking that it be subordinated in order to meet the requirements of their lender, who is providing a new mortgage. We'd sent around a memo, and again, I apologize to the board. The memo was drafted in December, and I forgot to send it out. And Barbara Merle from my office sent it out earlier today. This is a situation where a family member is taking over the residence, and they are essentially caught between the lender's refinancing requirements and the township's existing lien. The lender is requiring that the lien be subordinated. We... Our position is not damaged in any way. It's not lessened in any way. And we remain... Our lien remains in effect. And while we don't believe that it's necessary to subordinate this lien, the property owner's lender is requiring it. So the only way she can get a new mortgage on the property is by subordinating the lien. And so that's why this is being done.
Thank you, Solicitor Clark. Commissioner Myers, good to go on that? All right, great. All right, any further questions, comments from commissioners on the consent agenda? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Consent agenda passes.
Thank you, President Spiegelman.
Thank you very much, Vice President Hecker. And don't go too far, because now we have Board of Commissioners new business. And once again, I turn it over to Vice President, Ward One Commissioner Tom Hecker.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. We have five matters before the Board for new business this evening. The first is BOC-03-011421. And this is consider a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21-002, ratifying the declaration of disaster and state of emergency from December 17th, 2020, to January 14, 2020, and approving the declaration through January 21st, 2020, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none? All those in favor? Commissioner Bowman, did you have a question?
Commissioner Bowman? Is that meant to be 2021?
Oh, good, that's a good catch.
Good catch.
We'll amend the motion. Thank you, Commissioner Bowman.
So amended. Well done.
Do we need a vote on the amendment?
I would defer to the Solicitor.
Solicitor Clark, do we need to...
I don't believe so. It's not a substantive amendment. It's just a, essentially a typo. So I don't think there's a need to vote on the amendment.
All right, so we can go ahead and vote properly now?
Correct.
Excellent. Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. The second item is BOC-04-011421. And this is a motion, considering a motion, to appoint the following residents to the various volunteer boards and commissions for the terms outlined in this evening's agenda materials, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Hang on, I just got to make sure... Hold on, give me one second, I'm going to see... Commissioner Veighi, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. President. Consistent with my objections at the committee, the whole meeting in December, I'll be voting no on this. I very much oppose changing the policy of appointing members to our volunteer boards. And while I know three of the four people on here, and I, you know, respect them very much, you know, that doesn't take the place of thorough vetting and seeing if there's other residents or a township that want to participate. But the last two years that we did that was very successful. I know I learned quite a bit through that process. And I'm especially considering that there's, you know, five and four-year terms here. I'm not okay, so I will be a no.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner Veighi. Any other questions? Commissioner Brodsky, I see you have a hand up. And then Commissioner Carswell, I see you have a hand up.
Just briefly, I have to leave the meeting for a moment, but I just wanted to say that if you take a vote, I'm in support of it. I would not oppose that motion, and I would support the appointment as listed in BOC, item B.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Brodsky. Commissioner Carswell?
I share Commissioner Veighi's concern about the limited process this time round. I understand there have been some challenges with timing. But having chaired this process the last time and offering my comments to my colleagues and to the township staff about some recommendations for things that worked well and things that could be done differently, I am uncomfortable appointing people I have not interacted with, met, interviewed, what have you. I'm sure all four of them have done a good job in their role and as they are interested in continuing to serve. It's not easy work to volunteer for some of these roles. But I really do value our work in considering the folks that come before us. I don't mean any disrespect to them in not voting in support, but I do think it's problematic that we are appointing people for four- and five-year terms that many of us have not had a chance to interact with. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Carswell. And now Commissioner Rothman has his hand up.
Sorry if there's any noise from the kids in the back.
You're good.
The... Yeah, I agree with those sentiments. I think we got to make sure that we're interested... That we show the public that we're going to be vetting things, that we're going to be interested in in a thorough process. I am in favor of these individuals, and I'm going to vote to support them moving forward. But I think that we should work to figure that out sooner than later and just make sure that we're on the same page, because it's possible some of us aren't. But I think that that would be good for all of us, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. And Commissioner Thompson has his hand up.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. I just want to share the sentiments of my fellow commissioners. I will be voting yes to move these four individuals forward, because I am familiar with their work, and they do a good service for the township. But generally, I'm a little uncomfortable with changing the procedures for the vetting. And I do think that vetting volunteers for these boards is a crucial part of helping our commissioners understand who was on these boards as well as helping us to understand who's volunteering for what boards in the township and what their strengths and weaknesses are, and how we can ultimately benefit from their service. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Bowe has his hand up.
President Spiegelman, related to what Commissioner Thompson just mentioned, can we get some clarification about the fact that... Whether this is a deliberate change in a procedure or a need to appoint as a result of external pressures because of this anomalous year that we're in? I think some context would help a little bit. I don't think any of that obviates the need to move forward in a way that sees more planning, more strategic collecting of names, more outreach to the public. And I echo what Commissioner Veighi said in that regard. But I would love just a little bit more context about two things. One, the fact... A confirmation that we are not in fact proposing changing the procedure. And B, what the ramifications would be if we did vote no, and these four individuals were not appointed. Would we have those seats vacant for five years? Would we have an opportunity to appoint at a later date? What would be the impact there?
Thank you. Thank you very much for that question, Commissioner Bowe, because it actually presages what I was about to say. So I'll try to answer that in the most logical order that I can. So for the record, we are not ditching having a policy or having any kind of a vetting policy or a mechanism by which commissioners can, you know, in one way or another, get to know the folks who are applying. We're just looking to revise it. The reason for the temporary suspension in this case is in fact, Commissioner Bowe, as you aptly said, it is in part, no small part, due to the entire situation of this past year carrying, of course, carrying over into this year. These particular appointments are time-sensitive, because those... I mean, you know, talking about a full third of the Planning Commission. And in the case of the zoning hearing board, there are only five people. So, you know, any position is a significant percentage. And those two bodies have a pretty hefty workload on their agenda coming up. Also, we factored in that all of these individuals are folks who have... They've met, you know, they've met their commitments and been, you know, and been very, very committed to the work, and they were all interested in being re-upped. So with all those factors together, most especially the time factor, where there's just simply, there was just not enough time to... For all of the advertisement and such that's currently required by... That's required by the existing policy. That is the whole reason behind this action. But we're, for the record, we are not abandoning having a policy, having a system for vetting and introduction. Now, I see Commissioner Rothman, Commissioner Carswell, your hands are still up. I don't know if that... Do you have additional comments, or if that's just from before?
That was just trying... For me, that was just trying to get your attention earlier.
Oh, okay. No worries. I think that's... I believe that's the case with...
Thank you.
All right. Any... I'm just going to... I have to scroll through screens here, so please bear with me. Any additional questions or comments from commissioners?
Yes, Commissioner Spiegelman.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, who just jumped in? Oh, Vice President Hecker, is that you?
Yeah, that's me, thank you. So just to point out and underscore what you said, I don't think there's anybody here that would take the position that we don't want to be thorough and transparent in our vetting of people who are expressed interest in volunteer board positions. I do think there's room for discussion about how to continually improve this process and bring greater efficiency to it, including the timeframe around which it ought to begin so that we are in position to be able to fill these vacancies in a timely fashion. And we may want to have a discussion as part of this review about whether we handle new appointments and reappointments the same way or differently moving forward. And I think all of those things can be good substantive discussions as we work to update a policy that maximizes public participation in our various volunteer boards and commissions.
Thank you very much, Vice President Hecker. An excellent point, points. All right. Any additional questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Schreiber?
Yes, thank you. The other boards, these are just the two that are time-sensitive, but we do have openings, or we don't. I mean, we have people that we're going to reappoint or not on other boards that we will be vetting more so, that we'll be talking to and having more of a process in place. Is that correct?
That is, in fact, the game plan.
I thought that to be true. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Commissioner Schreiber. All right. Any additional questions or comments from commissioners? All right. Yell if I've missed you, because here we're going to vote. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? No.
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 All right, can you please keep your hands up so that Liz can record?
It was Commissioner Rothman, Carswell, and Veighi opposed, so that's three.
No, and Vaughn and Bowe.
Bowe, too.
Okay.
Roth... No, Rothman was not... Commissioner Rothman was not... Sorry, I need to talk over.
Okay, so it was Vaughn?
Commissioners Vaughn, Bowe, Carswell, and Veighi.
Thank you. Okay, so that the motion passed 11 to 4.
Thank you very much, Liz.
You're welcome.
Back to you, Vice President Hecker.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. We will move on to item C under new business. This is BOC-05-11421. And this is a motion to appoint Penoni Associates as Township Engineer at the fees for service outlined in the proposal dated January 6th, 2021, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Myers, I saw your hand up first.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. This, like the other, I think deserves some explanation. Certainly doing... Having an outside engineering firm is going to change the way we do business and the way when companies or individuals come in. Can we just go over the new procedure so that people know exactly how this works with an outside engineering firm?
Manager Man Freddy, I'm going to turn that one to you.
Thank you. So as you know, we are in need of a township engineer. While the search moves forward for a township engineer, while it's not required that we have a township engineer or an engineer with a seal, there are documents and there are other things that require a township engineer for what we do, such as one of the items on the agenda. It is always best to have somebody named Township Engineer who can review any documents with respect to land use or escrow releases or other things. So this is really appointing these two firms who are candidly currently appointed. We could have utilized these services. But I put it on the agenda to name them as Township Engineers so it's clear who... But I put it on the agenda to name them as township engineers so it's clear who is township engineer and alternate. Both Panoni and McMahon are currently engineers, but the scope of services that they are being asked to provide are a little different. So I was just trying to be transparent and make sure everyone understands what those services are and what the fees are for those services. In the case of McMahon, they're going to hold to the same fees that they would have charged for 2020. Their services aren't really changing. It's just really naming someone until I can go through the search to fill that vacancy. And frankly, they'll, they'll perform the same functions in the same way as the in-house engineer until such time that that's filled. In the meantime, I am relying on the Assistant Director of Engineering, Mr. Clark, to, to manage those items that are engineering and, and permit license related at code, as you would. And Mr. Jones is the point person in, in Public Works in the interim.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manfred.
Does that help, Ms. Myers?
All right, thank you. Commissioner Thompson, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. My question is for Solicitor Clark. I have a prior professional relationship with Panoni. And right now for my employer, I'm serving as a project manager on a construction project in Philadelphia where we are utilizing Panoni's services. They are not paying my firm. My firm, in fact, is paying them for those services to, so my question to you is, do I have a conflict of interest and do I need to abstain from the vote?
You do not have a conflict of interest and you do not need to abstain from the vote. The only way you would have a conflict of interest is if your vote would result in a financial gain for yourself or a member of your immediate family. What you've just described does not indicate that there is a financial gain for you, your immediate family, or your business in that you are working with them, but they are not paying you, so there's no need to abstain.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioners, upon.
Okay, Solicitor Clark, on the same vein, now Panoni is doing my project on Edgell at Tyson, and I do speak with them. Is there any conflict there for myself?
There is not, Commissioners, upon. You're fine also to vote on this matter.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
And Commissioners Thompson and Zepone, thank you both for your, for your careful and conscientious questions. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item D, which is BOC-06-011421. This is a motion to create a vehicular and pedestrian safety study team, and I so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Double checking. All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And our final item, item E, BOC-07-011421. This is a motion to approve the settlement agreement and general mutual release of all claims between O'Neill Consulting Corporation and Abington Township, and I so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Management Freddie or Solicitor Clark, any comments you want to make on this?
Just very briefly, President Spiegelman, O'Neill Consulting was the township's former third-party administrator of the drug program. Our relationship with, with O'Neill ended a few years ago. Township brought an action against them, and this is resolving that action.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes the new business for the Board of Commissioners this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. Now we move on to the new business of the Land Use Committee and Land Use Committee Chair and Ward Six Commissioner, Mike Thompson.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Just one item of business on the Land Use Committee's agenda for this evening. And that is agenda item LU-02-011421, which is to consider a motion to refer the requested and submitted petition to amend the township's zoning ordinance by pre to the Planning Commission as an agenda item for their January 26, 2021 meeting, and I so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. I know we, we went over this, and just so everyone's clear, again, this is just, this is referring the matter of the proposed text amendment to the Planning Commission. That said, are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. In reviewing the paperwork today, and I'm sorry that it was today, there is something in the paperwork that I found very concerning, that it refers to a wood structure which is not in compliance with our ordinance. Now, I understand that ordinance is being questioned, our non-combustible ordinance, but nevertheless, I don't think that I could vote for something as much as I am in favor of this project, but I don't think I could vote for something that goes strictly against our building.
Uh, no.
And I would be happy if the platform addressed this.
All right, before, before I turn to Mr. Kaplan, Mr. Manfred, Mr. Clark, any, any comments before we turn to our guest, Mr. Kaplan?
The, my only comment would be, this is the draft text amendment as presented by the applicant, as is the normal process with a text amendment, that when a property owner is proposing an amendment, they are usually those, the ones who drafted. This proposed amendment has multiple steps before it would be approved. The first is to go to the Township Planning Commission, also the County Planning Commission. It would have to come back to the Land Use Committee for review. It would have to be advertised. And ultimately, at the end of the day, it is the 15 of you who will decide whether to act on this text amendment, not act on this text amendment, or to edit and change the text amendment. And if a majority of you want to remove any reference to wood construction, you can do that, and the applicant's recourse with respect to the text amendment would be, would be limited because this is a legislative discretionary legislative function of the board. So I guess what I'm saying is that in essence, it's a long way to go before that provision or any provisions of this text amendment get approved by the 15 of you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
May I add to that before we do go to our guest?
Yes.
I'm certainly, we are aware of all of the steps, but when there is something that is so blatantly in front of us that is in complete opposition to our ordinance, our fire safety ordinance, wouldn't it behoove us to make it, make the change now before it goes through all of the steps?
Solicitor Clark, do you want to field that question or should we?
So, yes, you, you can if you would want that to be eliminated. But all that I would say with respect to that is that we're not actually doing anything with this ordinance right now, other than passing it along to the Planning Commission. The text amendment process is a little different from a regular land development application where when that is filed, there are certain steps that are automatically filed or followed, excuse me, referral to the Planning Commission being one. The text amendment process does not contain that automatic step, so you just have to send it to the Planning Commission. So in essence, we're not doing anything with this at this moment. So if you, if you want to say that should be taken out before it goes to the Planning Commission, the board, the board can do that. But again, I, I'm not sure, I understand Commissioner Myers' concern, but I'm not sure if it's entirely necessary at this point in time. But that's totally, once again, within the discretion of the board.
Solicitor Clark, and we will go to Mr. Kaplan, because certainly we don't want to spend forever on this, but in effect, what you're saying is, by, by, if, if we were to vote to move this forward to the Planning Commission, as is, that, that in, that in a way represents any kind of abandonment or, or approval of abandonment of our, of our non-combustible ordinance. And it's, this certainly would not be a matter that's going to sneak in or be forgotten about as the, as the text amendment moves forward, if it does move forward.
You are, you are correct, Commissioner Spiegelman. The only thing an affirmative vote on this motion does is send this to Planning Commission review. It's not an endorsement by the township. It's not a, a, an approval by the township. There are no vested rights with the property owner to say, well, you sent it to the Planning Commission, so now you have to approve this. All you are doing, all you are doing is starting the process.
All right. Now, before, I know what we, Mr. Kaplan has been waiting, but Commissioner Myers has another comment. Before that, Commissioners Bowe and Weingrad have comments. I'd like, ideally, I'd like to go to Mr. Kaplan when he can sort of hit everything at once as it's been presented. So I'm going to, under my discretion, I'm going to ask Commissioner Bowe for his comment, then Commissioner Weingrad, then back to Commissioner Myers.
Myself too, John, please.
And Commissioners Zepone as well.
Thanks, John.
Commissioner Bowe, you are up.
President Spiegelman, I'll make this, I'll make this quick because I am very curious. Commissioner Myers started this good conversation. I'd like to get back there. I don't know, in reviewing the text, I mean, it does, Commissioner Myers, I don't know if it helps at all. I'm equally concerned. I think that it does have the, it does say the wood frame construction should be permitted provided that it meets all international building code and national fire protection standards. If, if it does not, then then it shall not be permitted. Also, I, I'm with you in wrestling with this. We want to, we had a really good conversation during the planning or the committee, the whole meeting, where we felt like the good next step to move the project generally forward was to get it in the hands of the, the Planning Commission. So I'm inclined to support this based on the solicitor's comments, but I will share your concern as well long-term for this project. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowe. We're going to move on to Commissioner Weingrad, back to Commissioner Myers, Commissioners Zepone, then Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Weingrad, you're up.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. I have to tell you, Commissioner Myers, I have many concerns with this text amendment. And I brought this up at the last committee of the whole meeting. That's not the only one you brought up. It's not the only one I have a problem with. I think the best way to try to vet some of this out is to have the Plan Commission listen to it, have resident input, and then work on something that is perhaps that could be doable. But I understand that the Board of Commissioners is under no obligation to approve anything, and especially this. So that was always my view on it, and it was, again, to the purposes of this vote, is to have the Plan Commission take a look at this, see what the residents think, at public meetings, and then decide where, where the board wants, where the board's going to go with it. So, again, I share your concerns, but I think it should move on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Weingrad. Now Commissioner Myers, then Zepone, then Thompson. Commissioner Myers, you're up.
Thank you. I appreciate everything that you all have said. And this is where often Solicitor Clark and I differ, that of course he looks at things legally, but for me, this is about perception. And the perception of passing this along suggests that we are in favor of it. I realize there's a process, and my concern is we are not doing things in the normal way just by having Zoom meetings. It's much more difficult for people to have comments, non, non-board members or staff. So this R code, Abington's code, takes it one step higher. And anybody, any building where people are sleeping overnight, the non-combustible ordinance applies. This is to keep people safe. We have had this discussion before. This is really important, and I want that wall to last forever, but it's still about perception.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. All right, next Commissioners Zepone, then Commissioner Thompson, then Commissioner Bowman. Commissioners Zepone, you are up.
Okay, I agree with Commissioner Peggy Myers. If it's anything to do with a wood structure, I'm totally against it. I will never support that. And I don't know why we can't change this now while we have the opportunity to do that before it moves on. I'm total in favor of that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Spiegelman.
Wait, who just jumped in there?
I, I can't raise my hand, so after the Commissioner's speak, I want to make a suggestion.
All right, I then, then afterwards, finish with Commissioner's comments, I will go to you, Manager Manfred, and then we'll, we'll see. Mr. Kaplan's been waiting. Maybe he won't need to speak at all. I don't know. Commissioner, Commissioner Thompson, and then Commissioner Bowman.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Myers and Zepone and others that have spoken on this. I do find this language that seems to be trying to usurp our non-combustible ordinance to be objectionable in this zoning text amendment. And I would like to see it addressed. I feel like the language falls more under the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code than it does the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code and ultimately our zoning code that falls underneath of that. And I would strongly recommend that it's stricken even before it comes to the Land Use Committee when we next meet. But I do think that it is worth this board passing it forward to the Planning Commission so that we can get additional comments from the public and from the Planning Commission that we can consider in our next conversation regarding this ordinance as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Bowman, you are up.
I thought that we had learned in an earlier matter that we are not allowed to have rules that are beyond the state building code.
Commissioner Bowman, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to stop you right now. I respectfully request that we don't have that conversation right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Solicitor Clark, and thank you, Commissioner Bowman as well. Um, all right, before I go to.
That being said, I would ask that this move as it is.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. All right, if there are no other comments right now, I'm going to jump to Manager Manfred, and then we're going to go, Mr. Kaplan is, he's going to tear his hair out. But Manager Manfred, hit us with what you need to hit us with, and then we're going to talk to Mr. Kaplan.
It's real, it's just a mini recapitulation. One, procedurally, this would go to the Planning Commission. It would go to the Planning Commission to be on their agenda on the 26th. It is tentatively set to come back to you as the committee of the whole. As, as Solicitor Clark mentioned, the reason it's in this current form with you taking no action on it is because you haven't even decided to do anything with it yet. You're sending it to the Planning Commission before you even consider it to exercise your legislative right to do anything with it. If you would amend this now, and Solicitor Clark can correct me, it might cloud, cloudy, or muddy whether or not you took any action on it. But more importantly, I think if Commissioner Myers and many members feel that this isn't something that should survive this draft, I don't know that there's any reason you couldn't add to the motion that you're forwarding it to the Planning Commission is not an endorsement of the provision, and you could state your position to the Planning Commission so they make it clear. Additionally, Fire Marshal Roar and I spoke today about this very provision being in this ordinance, and, and we discussed his putting together a position paper for the Planning Commission and to attend the Planning Commission as well to make clear the fire services position on it. So I think if you'd want to amend the motion to have a second message be attached to this, to the Planning Commission so they understand your position, we can certainly make sure that the minutes from this meeting accompanying the transmission to the Planning Commission so they know, and we can alert the Planning Commission to the comments made by the Board of Commissioners here. And, and I guess before it goes any further, I don't know if Solicitor Clark would want to address, you know, that process or those suggestions or amend them in any way.
I have nothing to add to what Mr. Manfred just said.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Manfred. Before we go, Mr. Kaplan's going to go crazy here, but before we go to Mr. Kaplan, Vice President Hacker has his hand up.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. I want to underscore, I think, what Manager Man-
Thank you, President Spiegelman. I want to underscore, I think, what Manager Manfredi just offered to us as an option forward. I question whether procedurally, if we start kind of going through this and making changes now before we've decided whether we actually want to entertain this, whether that makes sense. I respect the position that has been stated by several commissioners about their objections to the language of this, and I support that perspective. I just think procedurally, the path that Manager Manfredi has offered is probably more viable than us doing surgery on this text amendment tonight.
Thank you, Vice President Hecker, and for the record, I concur with that for my position. I think that what Manager Manfredi just stated and suggested does adequately cover the legitimate issue of perception that Commissioner Myers brought up and Commissioners Zepone and others concurred with. All of that said, now, Mr. Kaplan, finish your bite of food, and please feel free to unmute yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
First of all, I want to say that we pre, really appreciate Commissioner Myers' involvement in this and help with this. And the last thing in the world we want to do is offend somebody who's helped us so much. So, talking about the procedural part, if you pass this along with or without the proviso, I pledge to you, you will never hear any from anybody from Preach saying, but the Board of Commissioners passed it along. We, we understand the issue. And I don't know whether Commissioner Myers saw my email late in the day. I was unfortunately in a mediation, and what I suggested was that I have been through this issue of what we call stick construction in many, many jobs, many, many developments lately. What I, and I've just spent a fair amount of time with your fire department. And you have a very able and sophisticated fire department. And all I've suggested to Peggy Myers is, let's do, let's have a discussion with the fire people. Look, as a practicality in today's world, I can't get a zoned project approved in any township without the fire marshal signing on. So we're here at the very beginning of this process. And if the fire marshal is not going to be in favor of our zoning change with the stick construction, then it's going to have to be changed. All I suggest is, the fire codes have gotten more and more and more sophisticated. And my understanding is that from a fire code point of view, it's what degree of fire protection is available as opposed to what material is involved. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, and the fire marshal will tell us. And we'll acquiesce to whatever you want, but I would just appreciate a discussion with the fire marshal because there are significant cost differentials that really weigh on a job like this. So whatever you need from Pre to say, we're not going to claim any credit or whatever you want to call it, that you passed it on, you've got that, I'm sure you've got it on tape. And we welcome a discussion with the fire marshal. And when the day is over, it's going to be the fire marshal's decision, as I see it. So I hope that helps, and I hope that you'll move it along. And Peggy, I hope you appreciate our sincerity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kaplan. Mr. Myers, I was going to call on you anyway.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Mr. Kaplan, I certainly do admire that. What I would like to do, and what would make me feel better, is to make the motion to amend this, adding the message that Mr. Manfredi suggested that we do.
No problem for me.
All right, Commissioner Myers, you just made that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I had a feeling, I had a feeling it would be Commissioners Zepone. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So let's see, do we have any other questions or comments from Commissioners before we vote on this amendment?
John, Commissioner, President Spiegelman, sorry.
No worries.
Can we have that restated for our considerations so that we know what we're voting on?
Absolutely. Solicitor Clark, do you want to speak it in legalese, or should we have Manager Manfredi speaking in mangeries?
I think mangeries is better at this point in time.
All right, Manager Manfredi, you're up again. Knock it out of the park, please.
That, consider a motion to send to the planning commission that the path, that moving this ordinance to them is not an endorsement of the provision as it relates to the non-combustible ordinance. In fact, that they are to give no weight to the language in the ordinance as non-combustible, and that they are to send it back to the committee of the whole after they've reviewed it and considered all information passed on to them from the detached Board of Commissioners and detached administration and office of the fire marshal.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. Commissioner Rothman, that's down to you.
I need him to do it again, but only say every third word.
How about backwards?
That would be sufficient as well, but let's, he can, now, thank you, thank you very much, Rich. I made it much more clear.
All right. Excellent. Okay, so we have, we have our motion, we have our second. If there are no further questions or comments, we're going to vote on the amendment, and then we're going to vote on the original motion as amended, if the amendment goes through. Okay, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the amendment carries. Any last questions or comments on the original motion as amended? Or the emotion as amended? Hearing none. All those in favor on the motion as amended? Aye.
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 Opposed? amended motion carries.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. That concludes the land use agenda for this evening.
Glad it was a short one, could be shorter. Now it is time for the new business of the Finance Committee. So we turn to Finance Committee Chair and Ward 12 Commissioner Matt Vehi.
Thank you, Mr. President. For his time on our agenda, I'll turn it over to our Treasurer, Jay Blumenthal, for a report.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehi. With respect to the amounts deposited into Republic Bank for the month of December 2020 and the year-to-date comparison, I'll just mention the bottom line. It was an increase for the month over the last year of $131,842. For the year-to-date, there was a decrease of $1,057,583. As for the real estate taxes deposited with the Finance Department, we actually had an increase of $36,975 over the prior year's month of December. And year-to-date, we're actually at 98% with a balance of 2% to collect. And this is the same as every year that I can think of, except for one year, 98% collected. So we actually had a decent year with the real estate taxes, all things considered with the pandemic, et cetera. And that's my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenthal. All right, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is FC-01-011421. Consider a motion to approve the November 2020 expenditures in the amount of $3,339,169.47 and salaries and wages in the amount of $1,858,083.74 and authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of February 2021. Nice move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Hearing none, can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioners Thompson?
Yes.
Brodsky?
Yes.
Bowles?
Yes.
Carswell?
Yes.
Rothman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Zepone?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Uplacido?
Yes.
Weingard?
Yes.
Vehi?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Hecker?
Yes.
Spiegelman?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. With apologies, I forgot that we did not have our regularly scheduled committee meeting in December, and therefore we do take public comments on each agenda item tonight. So retroactively, does anyone have a public comment on agenda item B for the vouchers? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is FC-02-011421. It's a motion to approve the clearing fund, the deferred revenue expense activity, and petty cash balances for the month of November 2020. Nice move.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Public comment.
Public, public comment, my, sorry, Commissioner Vehi, you got me there. All right, do not see any hands up. So now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item on our agenda is FC-03-011421. Consider a motion to approve the travel expense activity for November 2020. Travel expenses were $0. And I so move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any, any comments from the public on this item? All right, any questions, comments from Commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item on our agenda is FC-04-011421. Consider a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21-003, authorizing the Finance Director and her designate to invest township funds in any and all such financial institutions as permitted by the first-class Township Code. Nice move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Any public comment on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And the last item on our
Opposed? Motion carries.
We're stepping on each other's toes tonight, President Spiegelman.
I blame myself exclusively.
All right, last item on the agenda is FC-05-011421. And it's a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21-004, authorizing the disposition of certain finance office records as set forth in Exhibit A. Nice move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Questions or comments from the public on this item? Hearing none?
John, I think we might have one.
Oh, we do. Oh, we do. I'm sorry, that just, I did not see that before, my first scroll. Okay, please let Walter Draving in to make a public comment on item F.
Mr. Draving, your microphone has been unmuted.
You may begin talking, please.
It's, I'm not showing that they have a microphone, actually. It disappeared. Hold on, I'm, I'm going to allow Ms. Lehman to talk.
Okay, I'm going to reset the timer to the full time.
So you're allowing me to talk, but you didn't see my hand up?
It's up now. It was not up prior. It was just Mr. Draving.
Okay, so let me just tell you, Walt and I are here together. You have two speakers. You did not, you knew that at the very beginning of this meeting, and you did not come back and get him at the beginning of the meeting. So my hand was up but ignored, and then when you, when I went to speak on his, you then ignored him and didn't let him speak. So, you know, that needs to be fixed. So in my question on this one, and I assume we're on L now, right, with F, are we on F now?
F.
I'm sorry, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so, and the reason that I raised my hand now was because I wanted to make sure that we had the open comment with the Finance Chair at the end of this, at the end of the items, okay? I didn't, in other words, I have no way of interrupting you if you go off and forget to do that. So I just used this item to say, I want you not to forget that I have an open comment for Mr. Vehi.
Well, Ms. Lehman, why don't you just make that comment now?
Okay, so my comment is, we had, in the Finance area and the salaries area, we had a big debacle, as you know, over the fact that the township is withholding the information and the documents, which I've sent you all multiple times, and while it was happening, I sent it to all of you. And so, and you all heard him tell an absolute lie that it's in the budget, and of course, it's not in the budget. So what I need to know is, so first of all, I want to confirm that Tim Clark, before Amy Montgomery's departure, was head of construction services for $98,000 and also assistant engineer for close to $112,000. Both of those positions were held simultaneously. Am I, am I correct in that?
I don't have the, I don't have an answer to that.
Will you get me an answer by tomorrow? I mean, it's not like I didn't ask it 1,000 times. It's not like the manager hasn't said that he'll answer questions, and he said it again in the last meeting where he told the lie about it all being in the budget. Okay, so at some point, are you going to get it and actually answer the questions that the residents have? This is a fairly important question, right? This is over $200,000 for somebody who's not even head of one of the major departments. So it's a concerning issue for me, and I think should be for everyone in the township, especially in light of the fact that those documents were purposely withheld. Okay, so
All right, well, I'll tell you what, your time has expired, but you're, you are about to get an answer to that question. So thank you for your comment, and now we are going to move on to Manager Manfredi with an answer to that question.
I'll answer the question, and I'll also make a statement about what is being said that I lied about. One, no, the gentleman does not receive two salaries. He has two titles. He receives one salary, and I believe the salary is roughly 112. It might not even be that high, but it is not 112 plus 98. I don't know how it's being read that way, but no, you're not, you asked if you were correct, and no, you're not correct. It is one salary for those two titles. And with respect to the budget, what I believe I said was that that individual who was asking whether or not it was in the budget, the salaries, there is a salary schedule listed in the table of contents for each salary, for each position in this budget. It is there. I don't know how else to point anyone else other than to put it in a table of contents and list it. So I hope that helps.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. All right, there are no further, no further comments on this, on this agenda item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And thank you, Mr. President Spiegelman. That concludes the Finance Committee agenda for this evening.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Vehi. And now we will conclude with public comments on general matters. We have one hand raised?
Commissioner Spiegelman.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Spiegelman. One other point I wanted to make out. The other thing that we pointed out last year is there's also a Tim Clark
The other thing that we pointed out last year is there's also a Tim Clark in wastewater. So if she's seeing two salaries, it could be, and I apologize, I don't know his, but there's also a Tim Clark in wastewater. So the one position, I want to make that clear so that we're completely clear.
And this was discussed at the end of last year.
It was discussed last month as well, yes.
All right. Okay, go ahead and let Walter Draving in, please.
Mr. Draving, you can unmute your microphone at this time.
Okay, am I coming through?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Okay, I just wanted to say that you ignored my own hand when my wife went first and didn't give me a chance to say anything after that. And also, the mall presentation did not even vaguely show what Preet intends to do. That's not acceptable when you know that the residents were misled and it was inappropriate. It was also inappropriate for you to cut off the first caller who asked you to just fix the Zoom problems and not give her some time after that. That was a functional problem and not a question about the agenda. Also, no one's public speaking time should ever be taken away because of trying to get you to fix technical problems that you keep ignoring. You have 19 items on tonight's agenda. There's a violation of the Sunshine Act to allow three minutes speaking time for 19 items. I know you tried after the fact to say, oh, we should be given some time. But by that time, you were almost at the end of the program. You really should be letting somebody talk for 18 minutes about those agenda items. Didn't you take an oath to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth? You still have not provided the right-to-know documents we requested on November 16th. That is also a violation of the law. That needs to be fixed immediately. Mr. Manfredi said at several meetings that he would answer questions about the budget. So far, it doesn't seem like he's been doing that. I'm asking him now to answer directly why it appears, well, we already, we already talked about Tim Clark. And you're saying that that was a, you know, that he was not getting both salaries. But that should have been cleared up a lot sooner than having to call into a meeting. An answer on this, well, we're glad we got an answer on this and we hope we would get more answers on those things in the future. Now, Laura's got some three minutes to talk.
So, yeah, so, and I'm using Walt's phone here now. But apparently, you were able to allow my hand, my raised hand, to be answered. So I'm not sure why it wasn't. Okay, so what Mr. Manfredi said is just absolutely untrue. And the fact that none of you care and you have all seen the things that I've written and you all saw the things, what he just said tonight was untrue again. Okay, the things that are in the budget are actually quite different than what he just discussed. Is somebody going to take that up? Because you cannot continue to just lie to people. Okay, so I want to just
Can you turn one of your devices off because it's echoing?
Yeah, okay, I'm turning that off now. So one of the biggest problems that we have here is that you have removed the committee meetings. As my husband said, you've even removed the ones at the Board of Commissioners that were supposed to be allowed whenever you removed the committee meetings. You have removed the committee meetings for 10 months now and literally taken every meeting rights away. They have the right to address the chair of each committee at the end of every session. And you have removed that on open comments. And it's not acceptable what you're doing. That's a violation of the law. You know, you're doing it by declaring a disaster and saying, for some reason, you're allowed to add the committee of the whole, but the disaster requires you to remove the committee meetings. Of course, it doesn't. And that not only is a violation of the law, but withholding the items under the right-to-know is a violation of the law. Not recognizing when I say that you're violating the law is a violation of the law. The Sunshine Act allows for you to hear whenever a resident says the law is being violated. And you are cutting me off when I tell you that. And you need to hear it and then you need to fix it. Okay, the Preet thing that was just done, the fire issue is not the only issue. As Commissioner Weingrad thankfully said, there are many issues that are concerning. What a shame that none of you brought any of them out and none of you said, what a sham that presentation was that Mr. Kaplan gave that told nothing of all the odious points that are in there, including it clearly discusses building right next to residential. So the residential people, either on the BC district or it's going to be used in other districts, none of that was there are so many things that were not discussed. And sending it to the Planning Commission is one more controlled meeting. Mr. Spiegelman and Mr. Manfredi, both of you know that those are not the meetings that people asked for. Just for open meetings where they were allowed to ask
Further extended, thank you for your comments. With that, thank you. All right, with that, obviously, we have a substantive agenda coming up.
We do have, Mr. President, we do have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Believe it's Del.
Yo, Hausmann, I apologize. I closed my window prematurely. Please allow Mr. Hausmann in.
Thank you. Mr. Hausmann, your microphone is unmuted.
Okay, the mute button moved. President Spiegelman, as I think you already know, we have a number, or we should have a number of Boy Scouts here from Troop 304. And what caught my eye or ear right in the beginning was Monday and the service. Because one of the things they need to do in addition to attending a commissioners' meeting is community service. So is there something about the activities on Monday that they might be able to get involved in? Is that online somewhere that I can?
Absolutely, absolutely, Mr. Hausmann. If you go, as Commissioner Carswell mentioned, if you go to abingtonpa.gov/mlk, you will see quite an array of service projects in which your scouts can be involved.
Great. Thank you.
You can also look in my newsletter. Actually, any number of our newsletters are chock full of projects.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the committee of the whole agenda next. So we are adjourned. Thank you all. Stay safe, be well.